And welcome to Southeastern's campus. Today's meeting of the Board of Supervisors is now called to order. Carol, would you please call the robe?
Mr. Busada.
Here.
Mr. Davison.
Here.
Mr. Jackson. Dr. Leatherman. Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Nakaieva.
Here.
Maria. Dr. Noble. Mr. Perkins. Mr. Peterson. Ms. Pierre. Mr. Romero.
Here.
Ms. Russell. Mr. Saleem.
Here.
Mr. Joe Salter. Mr. Brad Stevens.
Here.
Ms. Julie Stokes. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Carol, and thank all of you for attending today. We welcome you and hopefully have looked forward to productive meeting. President Gallo has graciously agreed to give the invocation this morning. I want to especially keep our thoughts in those members of the UL System family who are facing health challenges and grieving the loss of loved ones. And after the invocation, if you don't mind, please, if you would remain standing for Dr. Wainwright to lead us in the pledge.
If you bow with me. Lord, we just thank you for today, a day that we've never seen before, we'll never see again, Lord. We just thank you that you've given us the opportunity to gather today on behalf of 80,000 students and nine campuses and 6,000 faculty and staff, Lord, to do the business of the University of Louisiana system. Lord, we just, we know that you're still in the healing business and for those on our board and those connected with our board and with our UL family, that you would comfort those who need comfort, heal those who need healing, Lord. We just accept all of that in your son Jesus's name. Lord, we ask that this be a productive meeting and that we would keep you in the forefront of everything that we do, Lord. Please forgive us where we've sinned and fallen short. In your son Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
In honor of our University of Louisiana system institutions, ROTC, active military, and veterans, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank both of you. You know, today is also a special day where we move forward with the next chapter of student leadership on our board. And I want to welcome our newest student board member, Maria Nakavia. Maria is an SGA president of this campus. In May, she was chosen by her peers to serve as the president, as the representative to our board. Welcome, Maria. And I also want to give out a shout out to Drew Brown for attending and support of this transition. Supporting her with her presence today are her advisor, Zachary Handlin; Chief of Justice, Keely Edwards; Emma Murphy, Chief of Staff. Maria, if you'll come to the front of the dice and meet our board vice chair, Brad Stevens, who will administer your oath today.
I am in charge of supporting the Constitution. I support the Constitution. And laws of the United States. And laws of the United States. And the Constitution and laws. Of the State. I have faithfulness and impartiality. And I have faithfulness and impartiality. And discharge and perform. And discharge and perform. All the duties of conduct and planning. All the duties of conduct and planning. As student member. As student member. For the Board of Supervisors. For the Board of Supervisors. The University of Louisiana system. The University of Louisiana system. For your best and my ability. For your best and my ability. And understanding. And understanding of the God. So help me God. Thank you.
Thank both of you. Maria, the floor is yours.
Hello, everyone. My name is Maria. I am incoming junior here at Southeastern. And what really inspired me to get more involved on campus is definitely the community here at Southeastern. When I first ran for president, my whole point was to highlight student voices and student ideas, and I'm so excited to continue representing that here. Being here and representing this amount of students is truly an honor, and I'm so excited to get started. Thank you.
Thank you again. Welcome, and we look forward to, you know, we certainly know you'll raise the bar from your predecessor. At this time, if I would have a motion and a second to approve the April 24 regular and May 19 special meeting minutes.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Stevens.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Pierre. Any questions, discussion, questions from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Today, we'll meet as a committee of the whole, so we need a motion and a second to conduct business in that manner.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Stevens.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Saleem. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. As you know, over the last year, the emergent method has worked with our system. One point of order, before I speed past, Dr. Wainwright, if you would, have some welcoming comments, if you don't mind taking the mic.
Thank you, Chairman Romero, President Gallo, and members of the board. Welcome to Southeastern. If you've been on campus and you haven't figured it out yet, we're celebrating 100 years, and we're very proud of that. And I'd like to share just a few milestones that we've achieved in this time, and then close with an invitation to our leaders at Boy State to share with you a little bit about what's happening on campus. So we're, we're so excited. So our university turns 100, founded as Hammond Junior College, and we sit on 350 beautiful acres on our main campus. Our campus is anchored by 173 live oaks. Many are on the national, or the oak registry, rather, and our oaks that are named are named after Louisiana tributaries. And so we're very proud of that, that history and that semblance of sustainability and resilience, which is what brings us into the building we're in today. Campus housing, just a quick update, we max out just under 2,800 students. We will max out again this fall. We've got a lot of housing off-campus as well to accommodate our growth. You're on our main campus, but we also have a campus in Livingston Parish. We have our Baton Rouge Nursing Center in the Medical District in Baton Rouge, and we also have our Biological Research Center in Lake Mariposa in Man Shaq. We offer six colleges, 69 degrees, and 78 majors. And we're very proud that our, our recent numbers are showing that we're going to hit the 1,000 mark on honor students this fall, a tribute to Dr. Procopio, our Dean of Honors and Excellence, and her team for their incredible work. We're actually going to expand honors into our innovation hub to expand their place and space. If you follow athletics, you know we have some high-achieving students in athletics. Not only do we boast the highest average GPA of our athletes, but also some recent conference championships this year in women's basketball, women's volleyball, softball, baseball, and also we're proud of our national champions in cheer. Our spring enrollment came in at 14,801 students, and we're currently locking in an enrollment this summer of four, just close to 4,000, which sets as our, one of our highest summer enrollments. And currently, year-to-date, as we plan for the fall, year-to-date, from where we were, of course, a year ago at this time, we are up 1,400 students going into the fall semester. Again, we expect that number to flatten, and we also expect that number to remain strong. Why are we growing? We adhere to a strategic enrollment management plan. Leadership meets on it weekly. We've adopted a QEP with a focus on the transfer student experience. Not only do we have transfers from four years, we have seven community colleges within a 60-mile radius of our institution and a QEP laser-focused on serving the transfer student. But also, families choose Southeastern for, for quality, academic rigor, and affordability. We run a privately-owned bookstore. No student pays over 60 bucks per course for their curriculum. And that's definitely what, what many parents continue to see and inspire, is that we are laser-focused on ensuring that we're accessible to the students we serve. If you look at the PowerPoint, what you're seeing there is our, if you'll go back, that's our centennial monument. That monument will be installed here within the next couple of months. Represents, every blade represents a year of our 100-year history with additional blades to represent the decades to come. It benefits from shade and light throughout the day, illuminates in the evening, and so we're really excited about the centennial monument. It'll be located here, just in front of Sims Memorial Library. If you'll go to the next slide, please. Beyond the numbers, one thing we're very proud of is, in our 100-year history, we've awarded 98,100 degrees. But for us, when you look at the 80,766 alumni, knowing that 63,897 reside in Louisiana, we're proud of that. And, and that has everything to do with the mission, us being true to our mission as we were founded, to ensure the educational, economic, and cultural development of southeast Louisiana. Next slide, please. One thing I wanted to share is, we often talk about enrollment, and we look at it through the lens of a fall semester, but across all of our University of Louisiana system institutions, my favorite question is, are you enjoying your time off this summer? The reality is, this, this is a, this is a screen capture of just June and July at Southeastern Louisiana University. The number of students served, we've got 4,000 students registered. We have Boy State, Girl State, Trio Upward Bound. We have tons of athletic, academic, and cheer camps taking place on campus. So it's a, it's a very important time for the university in planning for our projected growth long-term. Next slide, please. And by virtue of enrollment, just wanted to show you how we were trending and trending, and I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but if you look at that 2020 and 2021 year where you see that peak, don't forget, that was the COVID summers where we were actually providing, federal government was providing financial incentives for students to be enrolled. So naturally, we saw a peak through that incentivizing of enrollment. But if you take those two years out, you're seeing we're continuing to trend up. How are we growing during the summer? Primarily through honor students seeking additional enhanced academic credit, graduate students who are continuing along with undergrad students. We know that through our strategic enrollment management plan. Next slide, please. I wanted to take a moment to talk about two very influential leaders that have graced Southeastern. You are all residing, this current room is the official black box of our, of our, of our D. Vickers, Robin Roberts Broadcast Media Center. And I want to talk to you a little bit about D. Vickers. Dovie Avora was her name. She was the first, one of the first female faculty members. She was also responsible for our first honors club, our 13 Club. She also chose the colors green and gold for our university, and she initiated our first alumni association. So when you saw those alumni numbers earlier, think about her vision and leadership and instilling that association. And of course, our beloved Robin Roberts, 1983 graduate, one of the most respected broadcast journalists in, in America, anchor of Good Morning America. Robin is responsible for the addition you see on D. Vickers. So during Hurricane Ida, our university experienced a direct hit. We had $8.8 million in damage. You are sitting in the largest academic facility on campus, which was damaged and taken offline after Ida. So 3,000 students a day would normally pass through this campus. Those students and faculty have been dispersed since Ida in 2020, and so this August, everyone comes home. We are in the fourth quarter, two-minute warning of moving into this facility, and so I'm excited you get to see that aspect of construction. So when Ida was damaged, John Crane, former president, Wendy Lauderdale, our VP of Advancement, went to Robin and said, Robin, could we look at a potential leveraging of your $5 million investment to Southeastern in coordination with the rehabilitation of D. Vickers? And now, we have two of the most influential women to ever grace this university, and they are directly responsible for the opportunity we now have here at Southeastern. So we're so proud of that. Buildings 1,000, I'm sorry, 111,000 square feet in total. So we're very proud. We're home to the Vani Borden Theater, which seats about 350 students as well. And if you notice, next slide, we broke ground on our North Oaks Health System Academic and Athletic Training Facility. We broke ground in May on that project. What's really unique about that project is North Oaks is investing $3 million in it, specifically for us to bring our masters in academic, I'm sorry, our masters in athletic training program to reside there at the facility. But in partnership with Southeastern, we, we evaluated the Stanford model of how they're taking master-degreed students in athletic training and giving them opportunities in the ORs techs. So not only will they be on every field and high school and collegiate activity with a tremendous work opportunity, they'll have opportunities to work in the OR at North Oaks Health System. So this is beyond athletic, it's an, it's a, it's a talent development initiative. Aramark, our food provider, is going to establish a food concept there, so our athletes have their one location for all of their health and nutrition. So we're really excited about that project. Again, that project is rehab of an existing facility, addition of new construction, so we can invest in what we have and build new. Next slide. Last October, brought the family together, and we had a conversation about AI. When I started at the university, the Faculty Senate provided a resolution seeking guidance as it related to ethical use and responsibility, and we achieved that through policy, but we knew as a university, we needed to think much bigger than that. Our Faculty Senate President and our Director of Information Technology, both have a lot of research in this area. I asked them to co-chair a committee. You're looking at our Southeastern AI strategy that will roll out at convocation to our faculty and staff. It's got four pillars that touch students, faculty, business, and industry, academic excellence, and what transcends all is ethical use and responsible use. So we'll be rolling that out. I've tasked our Dean of Research and Innovation to lead that effort, and so I'm really excited. And, and what I love about it is, a lot of work went into working with business and industry for them to guide us on what a Southeastern AI-ready graduate looks like. And that's really going to be a game changer as we continue to work towards solutions through AI. And then my final slide, wanted to share some exciting news with you. We launched a capital campaign for our centennial year. Robin Roberts agreed to be our chair of that committee, and she would like to give you all an update on where we stand.
My goodness, I have some exciting news to share with you. Less than a year ago, as honorary chair, I was happy to announce that Southeastern was publicly launching its centennial campaign, the Get There Together Campaign for our second century. While much groundwork had been done at that point, reaching over $80 million toward the ultimate 100-million goal, when we launched it back in September, I am thrilled to tell you that we have already exceeded our goal. That's right, with your help and the great work of the Southeastern family, of alumni, partners, friends, supporters, students, faculty, and staff, we've done it. And as we stand today, we have raised over, are you ready for this, $104 million. We're not stopping there. We have such great momentum that we want to keep it rolling. So let's keep our efforts going through the end of 2025, close out this year and this campaign with a big bang. Thank you. Thank you for all your Thank you for all your help and support, and let's keep this momentum going. And as always, get ready for it, line up.
Robin, and that number is only going up. We learned last week that through a HERSA grant, through our College of Nursing, we're going to receive another two-point-one million, um, and for integrated behavioral health within our nurse practitioner program. And then also through the work of, of Dr. McCarthy, we learned that, um, we received favorable consideration for an AI-submitted federal appropriation in partnership with Department of Defense, and that's in progress, and continued work will be done there. But those are the, the opportunities that certainly await us. None of that possible without the dedicated team here at Southeastern. I'm going to ask those who are standing to raise their hands, those who are sitting to stand up, but please join me in thanking this team that make our mission possible. They refuse to stand up and raise their hands, but they're the reason why we have extra seating. So, um, again, uh, thank you all for your flexibility. I'm going to invite Mr. Micah Scott, the Director of Operations for Boy State, and two young men who are competing gubernatorial candidates for governor. The election will take place today or tomorrow, I'm not quite sure, but tomorrow, but they're going to share a little bit about their experience this week. And again, I want to, uh, thank Anzalone Contractors and his team for helping us get to this point today to be able to enjoy this facility. Micah?
Absolutely. Uh, good morning, everyone. My name is Micah Scott, uh, and I'm the Staff in Operations, as Dr. Wayne Wright said. Boy State, uh, is an eighty-five-year tradition of trying to change young men's life and teach them about, uh, their state government. We love what we do, and we try to do it well. If you ask any one of our counselors what our program is about, they're going to tell you that we are, we have two objectives. We, we have a responsibility and an opportunity. We have a responsibility to teach young men about state government, that's why we were founded in nineteen forty by the American Legion in the first place. Uh, and through that responsibility, we have an opportunity to make them better young men. Uh, and we could run a summer camp where everyone just sat in a lecture all day, but that would be mostly like school, and sixteen-year-olds are done with school in June. So, uh, what we decided to do, like many other programs in the, in the country, is to have them learn by doing. And so for a week, they get to have what they call the mythical fifty-first state. And so, uh, when they get here on Sunday, they are elected to officer, they're elected to offices, and throughout the week, they orchestrate a government on their own. Um, and so they're elected to things like mayor and city council, to school boards, to, uh, to judges, uh, and they operate in those spaces. We give them budget deficits and infrastructure problems and things like that that they've got to go deal with, just as if they were elected to those positions in real life. We put everyone in legislature, uh, to give them that experience of writing bills and debating with each other, uh, and we also do our, our court system collectively as well. And so they learn how to, uh, to work up an argument and defend a position and, and understand how the law works. But at the heart of all that is, is a large community, um, and really getting them to, uh, see different perspectives from different students across the state, uh, to really allow them to build bonds together that they're going to have for the rest of their life. Um, and, and to really make, uh, make the kinds of bonds that are going to make Louisiana better in the future. And so why does this matter to this group of you? Well, um, the sixteen-year-olds and seventeen-year-olds that we have in our care and under our charge will be on the college campuses across the state here in, you know, just a year or two. Um, and these are going to be your SGA presidents and your, um, your, you know, your major graduates. These are going to be the people who influence the culture on the campuses across the state, and hopefully will influence our state, uh, in the future. Um, so that's just a little bit about us and what we do and, and how we do it. And I'll let you, uh, stop hearing from me and hear from some of our, our gubernatorial candidates who were, uh, just last, late last night, uh, elected to their respective, um, nominations for governor. Uh, I'll let Joshua go first.
Um, yeah. Um, my name is Joshua Ludlam. I come from down in Denham Springs, a little town called Watson. I go to Live Oak High School. Um, and to be honest, at Live Oak High School, um, I really tried to step up a lot over there. Um, I'm president of my key club back there, and it was really through key club itself that I even knew about the existence of Boy State in the first place. Um, I mean, before it, um, I didn't really know anything about it. I didn't know that it was really a thing at all. Um, but I, I stepped up, um, in my key club at my local high school at Live Oak, and I became president of it. And, I mean, one thing led to another, I got a nomination, wrote an essay, and I got picked for it. And I, I told my mom about it, and everybody I knew told me that it was an absolute honor to get picked for it. Um, they told me that I should have been incredibly proud of myself and that it was incredible I get to experience it. And, you know, back then, I had no idea if they were telling the truth or not, but I can very confidently say right now, it's very much the truth. Um, this program has been one of the best experiences of my life so far, and it's not even over yet. Um, I have absolutely adored going through it. Um, my, my favorite part about it has just been the camaraderie I've built. I mean, from, from this man standing right next to me here to every single person from the individual parishes to just all across the program. Um, all of the, uh, citizens, as we call them, are all around Louisiana. I adore them. Um, they're all my brothers, I feel, and, I mean, even from them to the, the counselors, I adore all of them. Um, they're incredible. They all see so much potential in every last single one of us, and to have so many peers and counselors and just adults and people overall that see that kind of potential in you, um, as a person that you don't see yourself, it's, it's such an incredible feeling. And Boy State really does nothing but lift up everybody who's a part of it, and I'm incredibly proud to be with it.
Uh, good morning. My name is Hudson Smith. I am from Spring Hill, Louisiana, in Webster Parish. Our, uh, tight-knit community borders Arkansas in the northwestern region of the state. That's how far up north I am. But, um, I am the Federalist candidate for governor for Boy State, and, um, I was not so much selected to come here, but I asked several staff members from my school, um, about coming here because I've heard about it for, uh, several years now. I am the third generation in my family to attend Boy State, and, um, I was so honored to be able to come here, and I completely agree with my Boy State brother here that, uh, community is, the community here is amazing. Um, I, coming from a small town so far up north and also being the only one to attend from my school, I didn't think that I would be able to, um, run for a position like this and be successful. But I have come to find out through the community, I felt through my parish and the other great friends that I've met, that I can do this. Um, they have given me so much support, and it's such an amazing feeling. I have, I feel that I've gained so much confidence from all the people that I've met here, and, um, yes, um, I just admire all of the staff here. It's such an amazing program. Thank you.
We didn't pay him to say that.
So I just wanted to share with the board, again, the opportunity, all this is taking place now at our Student Union Ballroom, which is why we're not there and we're here today. But, uh, they have really enjoyed, enjoyed the campus, and certainly I'm excited about the future. Uh, Girl State was here two weeks ago, we had the similar experience. Our, our future's certainly bright. So thank you, Micah, for your leadership as well, and good luck tomorrow, and, and continue to lead and pour into others when you return back, uh, to your school. So, um, thank you all. At the conclusion of the board meeting, uh, I wanted to offer a tour to anyone who might be interested, Mr. Ken Howe, our Facilities Director. Uh, Ken, is he here? I'm not sure, but, uh, he'll be in a yellow shirt in the hallway. He'll take you on a guided tour. Um, again, our contractor is Frankie Anzalone. I think Frankie's here. Um, yes, thank you, Frankie. And then, uh, Michael Holly with Holly and Smith Architects, uh, responsible for the design. So enjoy the, the rest of the, the meeting, and thank you for the opportunity to welcome you all officially to Southeastern.
Thank you again, Dr. Wayne Wright and gentlemen, for your presentation. All the best to you. Over the most recent year, Emergent Method has worked with our system staff and team to develop a strategic plan. Considering that initiative and the fact that it will be entertained by the board today, it'll serve as our roadmap over the next five years and beyond. Today, the plan is listed far our consideration, and we welcome Mr. John Snow and Ms. Anna Schilling to provide a presentation. Before transitioning to their introductions, I would ask Dr. Gallo if he could share a few remarks.
Yeah, as, as they come up and, and get situated, um, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, this has been an incredible, uh, experience over the last, uh, almost year working with, uh, Emergent Method as our partner in this initiative, uh, as well as you heard earlier, uh, the, the Management and Leadership Institute has been an integral part of, uh, being able to develop the roadmap going forward. And so, uh, John will explain the process we went through, uh, in, in getting to this point, but we're really excited about, uh, what the, the, the future of the University of Louisiana system, uh, will look like with this strategic plan, uh, as our guiding light. So I'll turn it over to, uh, to our partners, Emergent Method.
Well, um, thank you, President Gallo and Chair Romero and members of the board. Um, my name is John Snow, is my colleague Anna Schilling. It has really been, uh, a delight and honor to work with the UL system on this particular effort. Um, as a firm that's based in Louisiana but does work all across the country, we've got the benefit of being able to bring a number of lived and learned experiences relative to, uh, the state of higher education today. Uh, but to work on a, on a project like this with the UL system that touches so many corners of the state that we call home, it's an incredibly rewarding and impactful effort for our team that also employs a number of, uh, graduates and alumni of institutions that comprise the UL system. There's a couple of schools of thought when it comes to strategic planning. Um, one is, you do it because you have to. It's a function of somebody telling you to. It's a function of accreditation. It's a function of state law. Um, and you do it because you want to do it, because you recognize what a really well-articulated, well-thought-out, engaged stakeholder base can help to result in a new direction or enhanced direction for your organization. Um, in, in this particular circumstance, I would very much put the weight on the latter. Uh, when we first, uh, started chatting with President Gallo and his team, um, it was very evident that this was not just going to be an exercise that was resulting in a plan that sits on a shelf only to pick it back up in a few years and do another one of these. Um, this was meant to be a very engaging effort, uh, that brought together, um, certainly all elements of the board, but certainly all the institutions and stakeholders that comprise the system. And so that's a very rewarding experience for us as your partners in this effort to know that this was very intentionally done to be a plan that could ultimately be implemented over the course of the next several years. Um, before I get into our slides, I wanted to just, um, kind of go back to some conversations that, uh, we had a chance to visit with y'all as board members, one-on-one on the front end of this process. And, uh, the things that stuck with, with our team, um, certainly I hope that you will find those perspectives evident in this plan. Um, I know a few things that were important to y'all that I want to cycle through. A focus on how, um, we do more with the same or less, um, how we're thinking about operational efficiencies and operational excellence. Um, that's very much a hallmark of where high-performing institutions and systems are looking nowadays, um, and I think you'll find that evident in, in this plan, um, that we're presenting to you for approval. Also aligning our academics with the needs of business and industry and employers, um, also recognizing that we are serving a different student base than we have historically, uh, not, not abandoning our traditional student, but recognizing that we have a significant non-traditional student population, um, that we need to make sure that we are orienting ourselves toward, from the perspective of access to higher education. Um, clear communication, transparency, and accountability. Um, certainly that's something that is fundamental to a well-thought-out and well-implemented strategic plan. Um, it's nice to say really, uh, good and aspirational things in a strategic plan. Um, it's another thing to make sure that we're being held accountable to those. Um, also how we navigate and push in an environment that can sometimes be a little resistant to change. Um, that was something where, I know from your perspectives, we wanted to make sure that as we're thinking about the systems and the cultures that comprise our institutions and systems, that we're providing all of the direction and leadership that we need to, to push ourselves as a system, push our institutions to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our stakeholders. And then lastly, how we think about collaborating with, um, more of one voice, um, across our system, across our institutions, um, recognizing that every institution has its own nuance and unique identity, and we want to make sure that we preserve that, but also recognizing that we, as a system, have a collective presence that is so powerful, that is so far-reaching, that we need to make sure that we think about things from a system perspective. Um, one, one line, and I, I borrowed it from President Gallo's, um, introductory letter in the strategic plan, uh, was "One system, one mission." Um, and I think that that's very reflective of the, the mindset that has gone into the drafting of this strategic plan. Again, recognizing that every institution is going to have their own missions, and they should, but also from a system standpoint, how we can make sure that we're elevating our mission and accomplish this sense of system-ness, um, that we're bringing our stakeholders together, we're bringing our institutions together, and that we're being really thoughtful about how we navigate these, these uncharted territories that we're in, uh, to make sure that we're delivering on, uh, the promises that we make to each of our, our communities. And again, how we leverage that full breadth and reach and scope that we have here at the system level. A little bit about the process that went into developing this plan to reorient y'all, um, around what we, what we said we would do on the front end. Um, we ultimately ended up having, um, right under a hundred one-on-one or small group interviews with a variety of stakeholders that comprise the system, um, faculty, staff, leadership, um, students, industry partners, employers. Also had a, a survey that went out to, um, staff of the UL system, the leadership of each of our institutions, um, the general public. There was a survey that was posted on the UL system website, uh, for folks to complete, um, as well as our students across, across the institutions. Uh, we were able to bring in some folks across the state that represent various partners, collaborators, and stakeholders of our system, uh, to have some ad hoc task force discussions as priorities started to emerge through the planning process, uh, through our stakeholder engagement, um, certainly through our conversations with each of you, um, as well as through the research that we were able to be pulled together throughout this process, um, and have some really enlightening, thoughtful discussions around. These are the priorities that we are looking at as a system. How do we think really intentionally about the strategies that should comprise these? And ultimately, how should we define what success means for our institution, uh, for our institutions and our system? And then lastly, as I mentioned, a very comprehensive review of dated information. So historical trends over time with the system, uh, looking at other systems that I would say are both peer systems as well as aspirational. Um, and aspirational in the sense of not that we want to be like another system, but they do some really innovative things that we, we can think about maybe modeling ourselves after and adapting to, to the unique context of Louisiana. And then certainly ongoing communication. Uh, we had a really great, uh, planning retreat with the presidents of each of the institutions that comprise the system, uh, to further, further flesh out what the priorities that are contained in this plan, uh, look like, and ultimately, you know, continuing to have dialogue with President Gallo and his team along the way to hold this process accountable. So starting with mission and vision, um, I think every, every good strategic plan and really every organization is grounded, um, in a really strong mission and vision. Mission being, what, what do we do? Uh, why do we do it? And the vision being what we ultimately aspire to become. Our mission, the University of Louisiana system unites nine institutions with a shared commitment to transforming lives through education and preparing its students to lead, serve, and elevate our state. We deliver high-quality learning, align academic programs with industry demands, and drive innovation that strengthens Louisiana's communities and fuels economic growth statewide and beyond. Our vision, the University of Louisiana system shapes the future of Louisiana through a unified approach to education, working as one to enhance access, drive innovation, strengthen partnerships, foster research, and grow a skilled talent pipeline. And then supported by, by a set of core values, um, and this was really kind of as we started unpacking these based on having conversations with stakeholders, the things that are important to folks as they think about, what do we hold true to ourselves? What informs our decision-making, both broad-scale as well, as well as every day we get out of bed and we're thinking about doing the work of the institution? What are the values that ultimately guide us? And ultimately, the way, how they shook out really mirrors a lot of the student experience that we see from students that are going through our institution. Starting with opportunity, education should be within reach for all students. Communication, clear and effective communication is essential to student success. Collaboration, strong partnerships across institution, industries, and communities create meaningful opportunities for students, faculty, staff, and external stakeholders. Innovation, as the world evolves, so must education. And then preparation, students should be equipped with the skills, knowledge, and experiences they need to make a lasting impact. Shifting from mission, vision, values to priority areas, which is how the draft strategic plan is ultimately organized, um, there's really four big buckets or priorities, um, starting with operational efficiency and excellence, student access and success, research and talent development, and external affairs. Uh, Anna and I are going to tag team walking through these at a very high level, just to provide some of the more salient points from within each of these, um, priority areas, as well as some of the performance metrics that ultimately comprise these, that I know certainly you as a board, as well as President Gallo and his team, will be looking to hold this process and this plan accountable as we move forward to understand how we're moving the needle. Starting with operational efficiency and excellence, um, there's a couple of words here that you'll see sprinkled throughout the strategic plan, as well as in, um, on this slide, optimize and modernize. Um, I think as a, as a system, there's a tremendous opportunity for us to identify where there are opportunities, again, to leverage our system-ness in a way that can achieve savings, that it can achieve efficiencies, that we can make sure that when we're making investments in our institution, that we're harnessing- in our institution, that we're harnessing our collective power, bargaining power, influence, when we're doing things like negotiating with vendors, that we're leveraging our ability to do bulk buying across institutions. These are all really important things that can ultimately drive efficiencies, again, that can be redeployed into our core mission. Centralized key services where appropriate and necessary, such as payroll and procurement, to achieve some of those efficiencies, and again, redirect those savings into institutional needs. Establish shared performance metrics and benchmarking tools that can make sure that we're measuring and communicating our progress toward cost savings. Explore opportunities to streamline human resources, audit functions, et cetera, in terms of how these might be provided at the system level. And then implement integrated data systems and platforms that can improve efficiency, streamline data management and reporting, enhance our overall risk posture across our institutions. Again, we are in a time where we need to make sure that we are thinking very intentionally about how we leverage our very limited resources across all needs of our system and our institutions. And I know this was fundamentally and critically important to this board, as well as to President Gallo and his team, that we make sure that we are always operating with a mind toward how can we do our work as efficiently and effectively as possible, and ultimately finding ways that we can redirect focuses that maybe have duplication or redundancy toward our core mission. Some of the performance metrics that are included within this section, and I want to caveat these as well, for some of these, we have really good data and insights that I know President Gallo and his team will be able to very, very, I won't say very quickly, but somewhat quickly, be able to think through, I don't want to hold you too quickly, that can look over the course of the five-year trajectory of the plan, and look where we have some trends over time, and be able to look at some kind of rolling year-over-year benchmarks for overall growth and success. For some of these, and you'll see crossing all of these metrics, this is new data that we need to go out and collect, and ultimately form a baseline that we can then measure and track from there on out. Some of these are quantitative, and some of these are qualitative, but I will go back to a comment I made at the beginning, that I know that President Gallo and his team are very emphatic on using this as a resource for both implementing the plan, but also being held accountable to the progress. And so, you see these metrics that are scattered throughout this plan, that are attached to very specific outcomes that we as a system are trying to achieve.
And second priority area is really focusing on student access and success, so harkening back to one of the core values of the system. A few strategies for how to really advance this priority would be obviously focusing first and foremost on access, but as John mentioned, really thinking more broadly about which, the growing and more nuanced type of student bases that we're hoping to serve. So, not only strengthening partnerships with K-12, but also how to best reengage students that have stopped or dropped out and want to come back to the system to complete their degree. Secondly, really thinking about those wraparound services that help students be successful in this pathway, so strengthening those supports, whether it's transportation, or thinking about non-academic barriers like housing or healthcare, that really ensures students can persist through their academic time at one of the nine institutions. And then those co-curricular experiences, so whether that be work-based learning, apprenticeships, other experiences that really make those degrees come alive upon graduation. And then lastly, how to better align academic programs with industry and innovation needs. So, thinking about keeping students in-state and connecting them with work upon completion. So, really tapping into the employer connection there. And the performance metrics, looking at this priority area, some of them are no surprise. You know, students that persist, students that apply, how many applications, but really thinking a little bit more broadly beyond that, thinking about partnerships across state agencies, really connecting the dots and making this a cohesive, a cohesive set of activities across our state to ensure that we not only have access, but ensure those students complete and persist upon their degrees. And then lastly, thinking more broadly about the types of services, mental health and others, that students have access during their time here at the system.
And then jumping into the research and talent development priority, again, not to make too much about the verb choice within each of these, but this was very intentional, strengthen, align, and accelerate. From a strengthening standpoint, how we band together as a system and identify where we can leverage our unique insights and capabilities to ultimately advance the economic direction and outcomes of our state, and ensuring that the research that we are doing is tied to advancing those economic outcomes. We have a really unique moment in time right now. The partners at Louisiana Economic Development have a new strategic plan for economic growth. They're very clear target sectors for how LED in the state intend to grow our economy, finding ways that we can encourage the development of research agendas that are responsive to those regional trends, as well as statewide priorities and sectors that we're looking to grow. Ultimately, how we align our funding and resources to support collaborative growth in research and talent development. We know research funding is not what it once was. It's going to be more competitive. We have to be more aggressive, and we have to think a little bit outside the box. We no longer can kind of put our heads down and operate with a single PI approach to a lot of the big grant pursuits that are out there. We need to think really creatively about how we can bring the tremendous horsepower and intellect of our faculty and researchers across the system, and where the system can play a unique role in convening and bringing together those faculty members that can go after some really big-time grant funding, that can also have a really important impact on our state, nation, and world. And then accelerate innovation, entrepreneurship, and commercialization from a system level, thinking about how we develop the infrastructure tools and policies that we need to support intellectual property development, recognizing that different institutions have different capabilities, but ultimately, there's a tremendous amount of innovation that's taking place across each of our institutions. And so, how we as a system can help to elevate, support, and reinforce the development of that really great IP that can have a tremendous impact year-over-year, generation over generation, in terms of what happens in a lab at one of our institutions, and how that's commercialized ultimately out in our community. And then, again, from a performance metric standpoint, you see some of those tied to this priority, and a lot of these are focused around how we're going about putting together our approaches for big-time research opportunities. As I mentioned, there is a shifting focus, and it's been happening over the last five to 10 years, among our federal funding partners. They're looking for big ideas that are bringing together multiple disciplines that they're looking to make awards around in terms of sponsored research activity. Again, the system, leveraging the full capabilities of our nine institutions and all the faculty that comprise that, and that's where you see a lot of these metrics in terms of how we're being really thoughtful and intentional in bringing together that intellect and those capabilities, to make sure that as we're thinking about engaging in research, that we're not defaulting to a single discipline mindset.
And the fourth and final priority area is external affairs. So, we just heard a very compelling presentation about all the great work here at Southeastern. This is kind of core to thinking about how we not only elevate at each of the institutions, what's going incredibly well, but how to advance a cohesive UL system brand and public presence. So, we are in a very interesting time in higher education, so how do we continue to elevate what's going well, advocate for the resources necessary to continue and expand that work? And then lastly, how do we enhance those crisis communications and policy alignment? So, not only in good times, but in more challenging times, each of the institutions has the support that they need to continue the good work for the students in the system. And these are obviously a series of engagement, not just thinking about traditional media, but all of the audiences and communities that the UL system serves to elevate what's possible, what's available, and then what is being accomplished at each of the institutions. And then a few performance metrics, a few probably not as surprising in terms of placement, media, et cetera, but there's also some performance metrics here about thinking about advocating both to policymakers and stakeholders, to really, again, elevate what is going well, what should be doubled down on in the future, and then how there are partnerships and priorities with our external partners across the state to continue to scale the successes at each of the institutions.
And so, just in closing, before we turn it back over to Chair Romero and the board for any questions or comments, next steps, we certainly, we are excited to be at this point, we're excited about the opportunity to support the system through this important work. This plan provides a very clear roadmap for where the system is ultimately looking to grow and advance. And so, I know part of what President Gallo and his team are contemplating, thinking about already, is how we start rolling this out and beginning to implement it over time. And so, that would be ultimately the next step, is that pending the board's concurrence and approval, is immediately looking to how we start bringing this plan to life. Last comments from me and our team, I started with this comment around "one system and one mission," and I hope that you see reflected across this plan, that concept of how we are trying to elevate and drive that system-ness. Again, not to overshadow the unique identities and capabilities and nuances of the regional communities each of our institutions serve, but thinking about ways where we can operate as more of a system, that we're being really intentional about that. The last thing I'll say, I've used the word "we" a lot, and when I say "we," I mean the UL system. We were very proud to be partners of the system in this effort. I owe a tremendous level of gratitude to President Gallo and his team for the time and effort that they invested in it as well. This was very much a team effort with the amazing staff and team that comprise the system. So, we appreciate the opportunity, and we'd be delighted to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to point out Dr. Claire Norris, who led the team. Of course, I want to thank our entire UL system staff for involvement in the development of this, and of course, Ann McKissin, who also is an equal thought partner in developing and keeping the schedule going and holding everyone accountable to getting information in timely. And so, as John and Anna have both spoken about, "we" and "our," they really have been equal partners in development of this strategic plan, and we feel like we really picked the best group to help us in moving our system forward. So, we would certainly appreciate your approval of the plan.
I would also like to thank, you know, both of you and the leadership throughout our system team. I know without question that, you know, this was a very multifaceted engagement. I appreciated the opportunity to play a role in it, particularly like the fact that it does encompass some alignment and rollout of accomplishing the things that I value, and that's accountability and enrollment growth. So, we have a clear plan. I think it'll interface with our relationships with the leadership throughout our different campuses, and certainly give us a good means to being open, collaborative, and accomplished. So, thank you again. Do you have a motion to approve?
I turned on my light, and I also noticed that Supervisor Myers had also. I just wanted to say that I'm very excited to see us move toward a more consolidated method of management. You know, it's been, it's been a tough ordeal that we've been through as big UNO supporters, for the UL system to have lost that school to the LSU system. And, you know, really, in my mind, what that's come down to, and why I feel like it had to happen, is because UNO was ready for that accountability and ready to be put into that slightly more top-down structure. And in those efficiencies, where we're finding those contracts, and, you know, using those economies of scale, and I do wonder, does it, and it might, it probably does, actually take five years, you know, to get to that point where we're all on a common IT system, like we're all on the same ERP, we're all dealing with all that? And that's what I realized, that ultimately, we couldn't pull that together for UNO fast enough. And they happen to be on Workday, LSU already being on Workday. It just all felt like, you know, that could happen, and that it could help UNO a lot faster than we really could. But you think it will take five years for us to get to that point where we can really start recognizing those benefits?
I think conservatively, five years. I'd say probably a three-to-five-year range. You know, in addition to the actual technology systems work, one of the most important things when we're thinking about big organizational change is the change management aspect. And so, I think it's not just looking at the implementation of a system, but it's how you're both understanding the current business process environment, and the people, and the cultures, and the structures that comprise those, and then mapping those to the future state. It requires, it can be aggressive, but also you want to bring people along with you, because you could have the best system in the world, that people don't have any buy-in around, and they don't want to use, and then it becomes a wasted effort. So, I think you can move aggressively and expediently, but I do think you need to allow enough time for that overall kind of change management process and mindset shift to occur.
Yeah, yeah, humans, humans sometimes move faster and sometimes slower. You know, one of the questions, and I just didn't, I didn't see it in here, but I might have missed it. I mean, I think one of the integral parts of that is that we're going to have to start to align our contract ending dates, you know, because I think that so many contracts, like for different services at all the eight universities, are all sunsetting in different years. And were there any recommendations in there, or is that the kind of stuff that we flesh out, like separately?
Though, everything's on the table. Everything is on the table. And of course, when we think about contracts, you're absolutely right. There is no central, now, more often than not, you do see them coinciding with the end of fiscal year, but that's not always the case. And so, I think part of this initial work is going to be doing a comprehensive inventory of where we are, and that is very much a part of what we intend to do. Sometimes the hardest part is just getting started. And so, I think today marks the start of doing this work, not just talking about it, but actually strategic doing.
Right, well, I'm so grateful for this, because, you know, it was just, it was a lot to go through, and it really highlighted to me the need for this movement toward this. I just feel like the times are lean in higher ed, and the times could be getting leaner, and that if we don't make our own decisions about how we're going to make these universities work together and show their unique personality around the state, but be, you know, doing it in a more efficient way, somebody's going to come along one day and tell us how they want us to do it. And so, I'm very, I'm very grateful that we initiated the process. I'm grateful for the report, finding what I really did deeply believe in my own heart or psyche, whatever, you know, what I really believed needed to happen. And so, I'm just eager to help on the way to this, you know, more efficient way that we're going to do things that can really highlight the academics and the sports, and just however we need to do it. I think it's so important. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Supervisor Stokes, would you mind if I take that endorsement and question and endorsement as a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to the strategic plan.
Seconded by Supervisor Myers. Any other questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all again. We look forward to working with you. This time, we'll proceed with our committee discussions and presentations. Supervisor Pierre will lead the Academic and Student Affairs Committee.
Yes, good morning. We have five action items on the Academic and Student Affairs Committee agenda. Dr. Janine O'Rourke, Provost and Vice President for Academic Affairs, will provide the report. Dr. O'Rourke?
Good morning Supervisor Pierre, Chair Romero, President Gallo, members of the board. There are five items for your consideration this morning, and I'll walk you through each at this time. Agenda item G1 is a request from Nichols State University to award an honorary doctorate of Humane Letters to Ms. Lenore Kirall. Ms. Kirall is an alumna of the institution, who served as, for an extensive amount of time, as the tribal administrator and director for the United Homa Nation, and helped to preserve the cultural heritage and further cultural recognition of the UHN in the Bayou region. Nichols would like to honor their graduate for all she has contributed to the region and beyond. G2 is a request from Northwestern State University to offer a Bachelor of Arts in Creative Writing. NSU has offered a creative writing concentration within their existing BA in English since 2021, which has grown over the years with enrollment and completers. Excuse me. The university would like to convert the existing concentration to a standalone degree, the BFA in Creative Writing, in order to provide a more stronger and stringent credential for students. No such offering is currently available in the state of Louisiana. The last three agenda items, G3 through G5, are from the University of Louisiana Monroe. G3 is a request to offer a Master of Arts in Human Resource Management. This proposed fully online program would prepare individuals for leadership roles in HR, and to equip them with expertise needed to address the complex challenges of managing an organization's workforce efficiently. Such a program would work, address workforce needs, as evidenced by layers of support and Bureau of Labor Statistics data, and would offer a unique offering here in the state of Louisiana. G4 is a request to terminate the Bachelor of Science in Chemistry. The BS in Chemistry has been a low-completor program for many years, graduating on a three-year average, just over two students. You can't split a student in half. The average is 2.3. We'll just go with two students, which is very below the viability threshold as established by the Board of Regents. There are currently 18 students enrolled in that program, and they will either move into the concentration in biochemistry within the newly approved BS in Integrative Science, or they'll be taught out by the or they'll be taught out by the institution. And the last item, G5, is a request for approval and to enter into a memory of understanding with LSU's Department of Chemistry. The proposed MOU will help promote and facilitate the transition of LSU students that complete the BS in Chemistry degree to transition them into the Farm D program at the University of Louisiana Monroe. And this concludes the summary of all agenda items. Supervisor Pierre, I'm happy to answer any questions, and we do have campus representatives in the audience.
Thank you for that presentation, Dr. O'Rourke. If no one...
I do have a question.
Okay.
Janine, and certainly I want to include our folks from UL Monroe. Items, items four and five, can you help me understand maybe what impact that may have on the pharmacy program?
Well, you know, let's go with four, the termination of the BS in Chemistry. This is not a personal problem at the University of Louisiana Monroe. When the Board of Regents conducts a low completer review over the last few years, they've been doing this a little more diligently with the academic planning process that was put in place. The STEM programs, chemistry, physics, math, they're all really not producing as many students. With this in particular program at ULM, and I can welcome up my colleagues from the institution to help answer these questions as well, the, there's been a transition into biochemistry. And so, moving into this integrative science, so that it's becoming a little more broad of a program rather than specific to chemistry. But that won't precipitate those students from pursuing the Farm D program at ULM. It's just going to be a restructuring of content of curriculum and focus from the general chemistry to a broader discipline within the chemistry area. In regard to the MOU with LSU, this will certainly help facilitate in ensuring that students have a far more streamlined process to move from LSU to the Farm D program. And so, you'll hopefully see a little more pattering feet moving across that transition from LSU to ULM. As a case in point, what you're going to be seeing in August is, it just didn't have all the signatures from all of our system presidents. An MEU similar in nature is in process. That's been vetted by all of our CAOs and supported. We just didn't have all the signatures in time. That will also help facilitate the transfer and alignment of curricula at our member institutions with the transition into the Farm D program at ULM. So, it'll be easier, it'll be a little more transparent, and hopefully that will increase qualified applicants to the Farm D program.
Well, I appreciate your assurance that this won't have an adverse impact on our pharmacy program's success. One other question, and I'll refer back to our Management Leadership Institute Students' presentation about Passport. Is this possibly a relationship we could have fostered internal to our system versus going external to the system?
Well, I think, and as I mentioned, Chair Romero, you would have had both MOUs at the table today. We just didn't need it, all the presidential signatures from our member institutions. So, they've been running in tandem. And, you know, for a Farm program, like the Farm D program at ULM, you want the most highly qualified individuals to, from which to select to enroll in the program. So, the more the merrier. And so, I think this will just help the institution cast the net a little wider, but you will be having the same agreements with our member institutions within.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation, Dr. O'Rourke. At this time, I would like to recommend approval of items G1 through G5. May I have a motion and a second? Moved by Supervisor Saleem. Seconded by Supervisor Davison. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Thank you, that motion passes. Is there any other business to come before this committee at this time? I think next up is athletics.
Supervisor Davison will lead our athletics discussion. Thank you, Steve.
We have nine action items on the Athletic Committee Agenda. Mr. Bruce Janey, Executive Director for Compliance and Risk Management, will provide the report. Mr. Janey?
Thank you so much, Mr. Davison. Items H1 through H6 come from Louisiana Tech. Approval of contracts for the following: Amy Sargent, Head Women's Tennis Head Coach; Brooke Store, Women's Basketball Head Coach; Matt DeTeas, Women's Bowling Head Coach; Assistant Softball Coaches, Chelsea Cohen Kobretzky, Maddie Green, and Tyler Kobretzky; Assistant Men's Basketball Coaches, Tyson Batiste, Kevin Gilder Tilbury, Winston Hines, Dorshawn McClellan; Assistant Women's Basketball Coaches, Josh Ashley, Olivia Grayson, Caleb Livingston, and Scott Store. And finally, H7 through H9 are from Southeastern, requesting approval of contracts for Jason Hayes, Head Women's Tennis Coach, Samuel Gregg; Assistant Football Coach, Allison Byer, Associate Women's Volleyball Coach, and Jack Hartley, Assistant Women Soccer Coach; Assistant Men's Basketball Coaches, Cody McCoy and Andrew Riley; and finally, Associate Men's Basketball Coach, Kyle Raul. And those are all the items I have, Mr. Davison.
Right. Any questions or comments from the board? Or from the public? All right, I'd like to recommend approval of items H1 through H9. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Stevens with the motion, second?
I second.
Pierre, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Any other business before the Athletic Committee? All right.
Thank you. We'll proceed with the audit, and Mr. Busada will chair that committee.
We have one item on the agenda today that is a discussion item, report only. Mr. Bruce Janey, Executive Director for Compliance and Risk Management, will provide the report. Mr. Janey?
Thank you very much, Mr. Busada. Item I1 is University of Louisiana Assistant Report on Internal and External Audit Activity covering the period of April 8th through June 6, 2025. The listing and summary of internal and external reports completed by various auditors since the last board meeting has been made available and onboard. Also included in that audit summary are internal audits that are currently in progress and a follow-up timetable to ensure recommendations that have been made in prior reports are implemented. Again, this is a report only, and no action by the board is necessary.
Thank you for your presentation. Is there any other business to come before the committee at this time? If not, the next items will be considered or facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Busada. Mr. Davison will lead our facilities presentation and considerations today.
All right. We have 12 action items and one informational item on the Facilities and Planning Committee Agenda. Bruce is going to provide the report again.
Thank you, Mr. Davison. For the campuses that have naming requests, the president has submitted appropriate justification as required by our board rule. Campuses are requesting approval of the following consent items. J1 from Louisiana Tech executed active donation with the Louisiana Tech University Foundation for a parcel of land that's located at 607 Tech Drive. Also from Louisiana Tech, execute another ground lease with the foundation to make renovations and improvements to laboratory and circulation spaces and HVAC equipment in approximately 13,000 square feet of the basement in Bogart Hall. The estimated value of the improvements is approximately $1,150,000. J3, Louisiana Tech, execute a ground lease with the foundation to create the Louisiana Tech Coaching Plaza that will be located at Joe IA Stadium. The plaza will honor the legendary careers of Coach Joe IA and Coach Maxie Lambright. The university and foundation estimate the value of these improvements to be approximately $650,000. Item J4, Louisiana Tech, requesting approval to execute a ground lease with the foundation to replace the artificial playing surface at Joe IA Stadium. The existing artificial surface is approximately 10 years old, which is pretty much the expected lifespan. The expected cost of installing the new playing surface is $887,000. Item J5 from McNeese, requesting approval to provide naming rights according to a gift agreement with W. Ryan Navarre and the McNeese State University Foundation to erect the word Navarre, the name W. Ryan Navarre, and/or the phrase Navarre Auto Group at Cowboy Football Stadium and complimentary areas at 700 East McNeese Street. As the terms of the gift agreement are evaluated and finalized using the guidance of UL System Legal Counsel, the university is also seeking approval for University President Dr. Wade Roos to approve the final version of the terms. Item J6, Nichols, named the maintenance building, the Ronald J. Shot Day Maintenance Facility in honor of a longtime electrical foreman. J7 from Northwestern, requesting approval to enter into a ground lease, leaseback agreement with the Northwestern State University Dean's Unlimited Foundation to resurface the Leon Johnson Track, put in a vulcanized rubber system, and to replace the lighting at Walter P. Ladee Track Complex. The foundation and university will execute a ground lease, leaseback for the construction and financing. The cost of this project is approximately $1,704,000. Once the track project and lighting are fully completed and all debts paid, the university will own the track free and clear, and the lease will terminate. Item J8 from Southeastern, requesting approval to name the president's conference room in Luther Dyson Hall, the John Manzella American Office Machines Conference Room. J9 from University of Louisiana Lafayette, requesting approval to name the football entrance tunnel set to be located on the West Concourse at Our Lady of Lords Stadium, the Will and Sandra Mills North and South Tunnels. J10 is also from University of Louisiana Lafayette, entering into an active donation for the acquisition of landing buildings from the Raging Cajun facilities. ULL has agreed to acquire by donation both landing building located at 210 East St. Mary Boulevard from Raging Cajun facilities that have benefited the university. This property is adjacent to properties already acquired and owned by the board. J11 is from University of Louisiana at Monroe, accept the donation of the Phase 2 of the short game practice area located at Wally Jones Golf Complex from the University of Louisiana Monroe Facility Incorporated. This is the final phase of a turf and chip and putting practice area that allows students to practice their short game without having to leave campus. Item J12 from University of New Orleans, requesting approval to demolish Milenberg Hall due to the cost to renovate, operate, and maintain the building, which is more, much more extensive and expensive than the value of the facility. It no longer serves any type of useful purpose. Those are all the items I have, Mr., as forced consent, and then we have one other item.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board on any of these items? From the public? All right, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Saleem, so moved, second?
I second.
Thank you. Seconded by Ms. Pierre. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, you want to talk about the discussion item now?
Yes, sir. Item J13 is from Nichols. Dr. Klune and Terry Bro would like to come to the table to present a proposed property development lease with the Nichols Foundation. And again, this is a report only, and no action by the board is necessary. It's just to inform you of what is to come. Dr. Klune?
Thank you, Chair Romero, members of the board. Nichols proposes to begin a process of due diligence to develop vacant property on our main campus to create alternative revenues to the university and to provide students with potential employment and internship opportunities. If you know our campus, it's the current driving range on our campus. We have provided the board office and you with a brief outline of the project, and would like to offer some additional comments about the project to you today. This project is intended to be a collaboration between Nichols State University and the foundation, an initial ground lease. Once the ground lease has been entered into, the foundation will seek developers and our partners interested in developing long-term business opportunities transforming the vacant property into retail, office, residential, and/or hospitality opportunities. From here, Mr. Bro?
Chair Romero, President Gallo, members of the board, thank you. The university will not be required to commit university funds or other public funds to this project. All development and operating costs will be paid by the foundation or the entities that they will partner with to develop and operate the businesses that may be developed on the property. All financial arrangements will be managed between the foundation and its development partners. The UL System Board and the university will be indemnified by the partners in this transaction to prevent any claims from creditors or third parties against the board or the university. The benefit to the university from this project development will be for the university to collect alternative revenues in the form of rents, commissions, and other funds on a recurring basis that may be used to assist with general operating budgetary needs. Further, students will benefit through the creation of job opportunities near campus as well as internships, both paid and unpaid, that can be developed through partnerships with the businesses that will occupy the property. Students across the university may benefit from such opportunities, but include our Chef John Falls Culinary Institute as well as other colleges on the campus. The foundation will continue to work with the university to further its mission of supporting the programs and the students of Nichols State University. The foundation will also benefit financially for its efforts in managing this project. Finally, the university and the foundation will mutually benefit when this project is fully developed by building brand awareness and providing resources to the community as a recurring source of alternative revenues to the university as well as resources to the community. We have had some, and the foundation has had some initial conversations with community members and so forth. They do support this type of development, and they're just watching with, along with us. This is an information-only item. We thank each of you for your time today. Without objection, we will continue our discussions and work with the board office as well as our board attorneys to bring this project to fruition at the appropriate time. In the future, we'll return with a more fully developed plan for this project and a formal request for action. Thank you.
All right, thanks. That's just, no action required on this, on that agenda item. Any other business before this committee? If not, I think next is finance.
Thank you, Mr. Davison. Mr. Busada will lead Finance.
We have eight items on the Finance Committee Agenda, five are consent items and three are discussion items. Mr. Eddie Mesh and Ms. Ashley McIntyre will provide a brief overview.
K1 is Grambling State University's request to approve, to extend the university's bookstore lease and management services agreement with Barnes &amp; Noble College Book Sellers LLC for one year. Barnes &amp; Noble College Bookstore Sellers is Grambling's exclusive retailer for course materials and supplies, emblematic clothing, commencement regalia, and other items. The agreement with Barnes &amp; Noble will end on June 30, 2025, and Grambling requests the board's approval to amend the agreement to extend the agreement for one year to June 30, 26. All terms and conditions of the agreement would remain the same. All terms and conditions of the agreement would remain the same. K two, Grambling State University requests to approve the student assessed fee reallocation. The Grambling State University Student Government Association proposes a referendum to replace for a student vote for a reallocation of existing student self-assessed fees. The reallocation plan would reduce KGRM radio by six dollars, reduce the Gramblinite by six dollars, and reallocate these funds to provide four dollars to GSU TV, six dollars to Cheerly, and two dollars to Miss Grambling State University. The adjustments are intended to better align the fees students pay and the value they receive in return. The student election is anticipated to be held in fall of twenty-five, and if approved by students, the reallocation would begin in spring two thousand twenty-six. Should the proposal be rejected by students, the current fee shall remain unaltered. GSU student representatives are present to provide additional information and to answer the board's questions. K three, Louisiana Tech University's request for approval to amend the lease agreement with Airmark Education Services LLC. The amendment would reclassify Airmark's contribution to the annual refresh fund to provide Louisiana Tech with update national branding locations on the university's campus, which amounts to one hundred fifty thousand in each operating year from twenty-nine through two thousand thirty-two and two hundred thousand and thirty-three. The investment will be capitalized through two thousand thirty-six. In addition, Airmark will make a financial commitment of up to three hundred and thirty-five thousand to the university to renovate the Chick-fil-A location on the university's campus. The Chick-fil-A investment would take place in twenty-six and would be amortized on a straight-line basis through June two thousand thirty-six. In all other respects, the agreement will remain in full force in effect. K four, the president of UL Lafayette has requested that K four be removed from the agenda. Item K five, University Louisiana's request for approval for Jones Walker to represent the university in matters relating to the university's trademarks in accordance with a cooperative endeavor agreement with the university, between the university and the UL Lafayette Foundation. The UL Lafayette requests board approval to allow Jones Walker to represent UL Lafayette through an engagement agreement with UL Lafayette Foundation and Jones Walker. The university and foundation have agreed, have entered into a cooperative endeavor agreement for the foundation to handle matters related to protection of the university's trademarks. Services provided by Jones Walker would include providing trademark advice to the university, handling trademark registrations, and handling trademark opposition proceedings before the US Trademark Trial and Appeal Board. The UL Lafayette Foundation would pay for the legal services.
Item K six is the systems discussion of fiscal year twenty-five, third quarter financial reports. In the past, the quarterly report of financial information did not include our system office, but starting with this report and going forward, we've included it. The first report is a comparison of the operating budget versus actual revenues and expenditures through third quarter ending March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Overall, revenues collected through the third quarter are ninety-one percent of total budget, which is expected since the majority of tuition and fees have been collected for both fall and spring. Campuses adjust the original budget throughout the year to accurately reflect the available budget. This quarter, the available budget was adjusted by campuses to reflect that they expect to collect approximately four point two million more than was projected for the second quarter, and this is due to some of those campus, some campuses experiencing growth in enrollment. Additionally, UNO's projected operating fund deficit has improved by about three point seven million from last quarter's projection, and this is a result of many efforts, including furloughs and various spending freezes through the end of fiscal year twenty-five. Overall, expenses for the third quarter are seventy-nine percent of total budget, which is also expected since the majority of scholarships were awarded during the fall semester, which is also the reason for the higher variance for the scholarship and fellowship and other charges expense. Additionally, operating services expenses is at eighty-five percent of budget through the third quarter, mostly because of the timing of Office of Risk Management payments. The next report shows the auxiliary and athletic revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balances projected through the end of the fiscal year. I've also provided the report that shows this information broken down for each campus. As of March thirty-first, campuses expect approximately two hundred and sixty-nine million in revenues, three hundred and fifteen million in expense, and twenty million in net transfers in, which results in an ending overall current year operating deficit of approximately forty-eight million. The projection for the current year and cumulative deficit grew by about seven million from the last quarter's projection. While budgets should be reviewed and updated each quarter, third quarter adjustments tend to show a more accurate projection since the majority of athletic and auxiliary revenues have been collected. The projected auxiliary's deficit grew from the last quarter mostly because of a reporting correction made to not include transfers in or out from affiliated nonprofit corporations within this auxiliary report. Additionally, universities experienced less student participation in certain auxiliary services than expected. The next report presents each campus's current year athletic deficits for fiscal year twenty-four compared to their projected current year deficits for fiscal year twenty-five. The projected current year deficit remains at twenty-six million, which is an improvement from fiscal year twenty-four, but reserves do continue to be depleted to cover the athletic deficits.
The third quarter reports show some institutions continue to use non-operating funds to support their operating budgets by transferring funds into the operating budget, by moving expenditures out of the operating fund, or by charging operating fund-type expenditures directly to other institutional funds to balance their operating fund budgets. With both operating fund budgets and athletic fund budgets depending, dependent on support from other limited university funds, institutional reserves are being depleted and placing institutions in unsustainable positions. In your materials is a document titled "Non-Operating Funds." The report shows six campuses are projecting combined revenues falling short of expenditures and anticipating using reserves. The report also shows four campuses are projecting that unrestricted reserves will be negative at year-end. The three campuses are projecting total reserves, and three campuses are projecting total reserves will be negative at year-end. One campus is projecting an operating fund budget deficit and negative total reserves. Campuses with negative reserves will need to reduce expenditures and refine additional revenues to put their institutions into sustainable positions. There are positive signs for the future. Although thirty-one million of one-time restricted and unrestricted funds will fall off next year, HB one and HB four sixty are currently written to provide the UL System with fifty-three million of restricted and unrestricted one-time funds. Of the fifty-three million, UNO received twenty-five million. With budget adjustments UNO is planning to implement next year, these one-time funds will greatly assist UNO in its efforts to become a sustainable institution. In addition, House Bill six thirty-nine is expected to provide additional recurring funds for athletic programs. These funds could play a part in institutions' efforts to make athletic programs more sustainable. Further, FY twenty-six, UL's institutions are estimating growth in recurring self-generated revenue from differential tuition and fee increases. Institutions estimate that forty-five million will be generated in FY twenty-six. We greatly appreciate the additional resources provided by the governor and the legislature. The main takeaway from the third quarter is that for FY twenty-five, some institutions continue to be dependent on non-operating funds to balance their operating fund budgets, and without this support, we'd have operating fund deficits. Athletic fund deficits are using these same institutional resources, and this condition is having a considerable and growing impact on institutional sustainability. For FY twenty-six, FY twenty-six is showing positive signs to improve the trends of twenty-five. Institutions will receive increased one-time funds for their short-term needs. Institutions will receive additional recurring self-generated revenues through tuition and fee increases, and institutions will receive additional recurring revenues for their athletic programs. This is a report only and no action by the board is necessary. This completes the consent items, Mr. Basada.
Thank you, Mr. Mesh. Consent items K one through three and K five have been reviewed by board staff. Staff recommends approval. Of course, if any member has a question or wishes to discuss any of these items, please let me know.
Can we track the expiration dates of these contracts? Like to start looking at that for consolidation?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Could we track the expiration dates of contracts around the campuses? Because we probably need to start.
Not at the system level, but we can begin doing that based on a strategic plan.
Are there any comments from the public? Please.
On the contracts, do we know the amount of the contract that they're being asked to approve on four and five?
Well, four is, four is out. We're not, we're not considering four, it's been withdrawn.
Right. And, well, five, yes, sir. We don't have a total amount of the contract for five. That's being paid by the UL Lafayette Foundation.
And it's just an hourly rate that was in the?
Yes, sir, they have an engagement agreement, where the foundation has an engagement agreement with Jones Walker, and so the charges will be based on that, on the rates that are, hourly rates in that agreement. But again, the foundation will be paying this, not the university.
So is the foundation's paying, and how does it come to us?
The... Well, I think actually there's a cooperative endeavor agreement between the two entities, the university and the foundation, and so that allows the foundation to be responsible and to defend the interests of their trademarks, and so through that cooperative endeavor agreement, that's why the foundation is handling this for the university.
So the contract is with the university, but the foundation's going to repay it, and that's why?
Well, actually, this is only a request to allow the foundation to represent the university, and Jones Walker to represent the university, but the foundation is paying for that through the cooperative endeavor agreement.
But that comes down to money?
Yes, paid by the foundation. Yes, ma'am.
So this is only to approve them to represent?
Correct.
Not for the dispersing?
Correct. That's right. Only to represent the university, have the ability to represent the university through the cooperative endeavor agreement with the foundation.
Will the contract come back to us for approval at some point?
Since it's, it's, well, the engagement agreement is what provides the services to the foundation. The contract itself would not come before the board unless the board requested that. This was simply just to allow Jones Walker to represent the university through the UL Foundation.
This is begun to be something that I'm just really curious about, how contracts, all contracts don't come before this board?
Not necessarily.
Yeah.
Some...
To understand the delineation sometimes.
There's a lot of business contracts that are handled by the university and don't come before the board, but if a contract called for a lease of land or issuance of debt, then yes, it would come before the board.
But it could be to go into a contract to buy a big, say, information system, and that's going to cost forty-two million dollars, and it still wouldn't come to us necessarily?
Correct.
That's fascinating to me.
Yeah, so like, like the workday implementation?
Yeah.
Those were funded by the individual universities. And now, we did contract for that implementation for the universities, but the universities actually paid those contracts, paid for those contracts.
But why do we approve athletic, like, I mean, some of these athletic positions are tiny little, they're small jobs. We approve them, but yet we don't approve forty-two million dollar contracts. I'm sorry, I'm going off the wheel, but I'm just trying to understand our whole...
Yes, please.
Out loud, sorry.
Technically, you approve every personnel matter that comes before the system and that's actually at each institution. As you'll see in the president's report, you'll see where there's personnel actions under president's business. So you are approving every personnel action at every institution, which is how you see that long schedule at the end that shows where everybody is going. With respect to an actual employment contract that is being entered into by the institution for an athletic director, there is a specific bylaw and rule that requires those matters to come before the board. So there's other ones that have a contract attached to it, there's others that do not have a contract attached to it that are just regular employment, and you don't have a contract, and those are still being approved by the board. As it relates to the Jones Walker engagement, that is for the approval of the representation to the university. Now, we are not paying for it, but because they are representing us, we have to consent that they can represent us, so they have to bring that to us no matter what. They can't just represent a party without having their party's consent. So once we get the approval from the board, then they can represent us, but the foundation will pay the bill.
The foundation, for some reason, didn't pay him when he filed by the board, correct?
Not according to the engagement agreement that they have. The foundation is solely responsible for the, for the payment of that invoice.
So the contract doesn't come back, but we don't get in another situation like we did?
That, that is the way that the current engagement provides, is that the foundation will pay for, and there is no liability back to the institution for the payment of that debt. Now, I can assure you that they would probably discontinue representation very quickly if the foundation doesn't, doesn't pay the bill.
So, so that other question, just about like large-scale contracts, why don't those come to us?
So, so contracts generally do come to you. It just depends on the nature and the scope of the contract. There are contracts in the versions of CEAs that if they're with the institution and another state entity or agency within the state, those CEAs aren't necessarily required to come before the board if it's between UL and, you know, the Department of Health on something. Intergovernmental agency CEAs with the institutions are generally not necessarily those, because there's usually no money involved. It's usually providing a service back and forth or an exchange of a service for something where someone is drawing down. For, for the other contracts, as it relates to building programs and things of that nature, it really depends on the structure of the transaction. You're seeing the lease agreements that have come before you because the university is leasing its facility to its foundation, who is actually going to get the financing and/or has raised the money to pay for those items, and then we lease it back from the foundation. Our lease payments roughly match what the actual debt is that it took to build the improvement, and then once it's done, we own it, the lease terminates. The legislature decided to give uniquely to the institutions, the systems, this particular leasing power under seventeen thirty-six six one. No other state entities have that ability because we have a foundation, we have alumni base that are willing to contribute money in order to improve certain facilities around the campus, which is a little bit different. Not everybody's running to go show up and give money to, you know, LDH to say, we want to improve this, but people who went to UL or people who went to Tech are willing to show up and pay to improve a particular facility because they want to enjoy it, and so we're, we have a mechanism that allows for that.
And Supervisor Stokes, one of the things we intend to do as a staff in our next board development will be to address contracts and, and other issues as, as we go forward. So I just want to let you know that will be an upcoming topic of board development.
That's really good, because I'm really unclear still.
Sure, I understand.
On how a really large contract could be signed at the university level, and we don't know about it. I mean...
Typically, that doesn't happen, but yeah, I understand where your concern is.
We digress.
Sure, so, and then, with your former time in the legislature, I'm sure you understand the capital outlay process, where we actually don't participate in that. If, if they're building the building, we don't get it until they're done, so we're not signing those contracts.
I'm just like, in the course of this, not to bring the, the UNO thing again, but you know, in the course of learning about it after the fact, I learned about all these contracts and stuff, and I'm like, whoa, what was that? And so some of them don't come here, so I want to understand the process for, and I... So I want to understand the process for, and I will have that in person.
Small amount would not necessarily come, and it would be under some very limited conditions.
Well, there was, yeah, very, 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 well, yeah, we'll talk about it.
Certainly.
Quite a large one that, you know, okay, yeah, we really do need to understand that. I think there's probably several of us up here that feel like, you know, not necessarily anything wrong. We just need to understand it more. The longer I'm here, the more questions I have.
Certainly.
Any other questions? Anything from the public? If no one requires any further clarification on consent agenda items, may I have a motion and a second for approval of K1 through 3 and K5? Second. Second by Stevens. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. At this time, Mr. Eddie Mesh will provide a brief overview of the discussion items.
On the discussion agenda, University of Louisiana-Lafayette requests approval of three separate legal contracts with Oats and Marino. Case seven, University of Louisiana-Lafayette's request for approval for a contract amendment for professional services with Oats and Marino. The university requests a board approval to amend its FY25 contract, which has a term of July 1/24 to June 30/25. The amendment would increase the contract amount by $100,000, bringing the maximum contract amount from $750,000 to $850,000, including fees and reimbursement of expenses. The contract amendment would provide the same legal services and at the same hourly rates. Case eight, University of Louisiana-Lafayette's request for approval of a contract with Oats and Marino for performance of professional legal services relating to New Iberia Research Center. The contract term would be for July 1/25 through June 30/26, and the maximum contract amount is $25,000, including fees and reimbursement of expenses. Case nine, University of Louisiana-Lafayette's request for approval of a contract with Oats and Marino for performance of professional legal services for general university matters. The contract term would be from July 25 to June 26. The maximum amount that may be paid under the contract is $350,000, including fees and reimbursement of expenses. Legal services provided by these three Oats and Marino contracts would not include matters related to tort or workers' compensation covered by the Office of Risk Management in the contracts that we built in accordance with Policy and Procedure Memo 50. University of Louisiana-Lafayette represents the president to explain more and to answer the board's questions about the Oats and Marino contracts. This completes the discussion items, Mr. Passata.
These discussion agenda items have been reviewed by board staff, and staff recommends approval. Does any member have any questions or wishes to discuss any of these items?
Oh, we're taking them individually?
I would make a motion that we take items K7, K8, and K9 separately.
We have a motion and a second, is that correct? Ed Liz?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So we'll take K7 first. Do we have any questions or discussion on it?
Mr. Mesh, that's for a contract that ends June 30th, so I have to assume that money has already been essentially spent, right? So we're trying to get to the end of the fiscal year.
Trying to expand the contract to pay for additional...
So we exceeded the contractual limit that was set last year?
Correct. That's why they're asking for the amendment.
Kind of defeats the purpose of setting a limit for a contract limit if we exceed it and they're asked to pay the additional amount.
No further discussion? All in favor, say aye. I thought we had a motion. Oh, okay, do I have a motion? For K7, a motion and a second to approve it?
We had a motion to take it separately.
Right, and I just asked for a motion for approval for K7. And I don't, I'm not getting a motion for that. So I guess we'll move to K8. Any questions or discussion on K8? If not, may I have a motion and a second for its approval?
I make a motion that we reject the contract presented in K8.
Second one. All right. So all in favor to reject K8, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, that passes. All right. Now, K9, is there any discussion on K9?
I'll make a motion that we also reject the contract presented in item K9.
Motion, second, same. All right. So, any questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Do we have any other business at this time? If not, that concludes the business of the finance committee. Next committee is personnel.
While we're in intermission, just a quick point of privilege, Dr. Gallo has a recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to recognize the student government president from Grambling, Amaya Moore, who, she's interning with Fidelity Investments in Dallas this summer. She flew in, the last flight into Baton Rouge last night, and she was here if there were any questions that came up. So I wanted to recognize Amaya. Stand up, Amaya. And also Dean Terry Lilly, who was kind enough to stay at the airport to get her here. So Dean Lilly, thank you so much as well.
Thank you for joining us and the extra effort to be here. Supervisor Stokes will chair legislation.
Thank you. We have one discussion item on the legislative agenda today. Rich Bath, the Director of Research and Advancement, will provide the report on the 2025 regular session. Mr. Bath?
Thank you, Supervisor Stokes, Chair Romero, President Gallo, and members of the board. I'm delighted to report that we once again hosted UL S-Day at the Capitol on May 5th. We had wonderful representation from all nine institutions, highlighting the best of the UL system in terms of academic excellence, athletic excellence, and the performing and culinary arts. We were joined in the celebration by legislators, business and industry leaders, and alumni, and we are grateful for the students, faculty, and staff that made the event such a success. The 2025 regular legislative session concluded on July, I'm sorry, June 12th. I am grateful to report, as Mr. Mesh mentioned, that the governor and the legislature remain committed to maintaining funding levels for higher education, and our institutions were successful in securing additional appropriations to ensure and maintain organizational growth and success. Throughout the session, we also monitored a number of instruments with potential impact on higher education in our system, including, but not limited to, a few that I'll discuss. Act 157, which provided a privacy waiver for mental health information on the part of post-secondary education students to be shared with institutions in the event of mental health crises. Act 174, which requires post-secondary education students involved in student organizations to complete mandatory anti-hazing courses. Similarly, HCR 37 established a hazing prevention task force to address this critical issue on our college campuses. HB 685, which sought to eliminate diversity, equity, and inclusion programs in state agencies, including higher education, did not move forward. Several other instruments seeking to address NIL issues did not move forward, including HB 166 and 168. However, House Resolution 15 was approved and will create a NIL task force with participation from our system. HR 320, which requests the State Department of Education, BESI, the Board of Regents, and the post-secondary education management boards, such as U, to promote artificial intelligence education for students and to encourage professional development related to artificial intelligence for faculty and staff. Act 47 makes further adjustments to the optional retirement plan in the teachers' retirement system of Louisiana, continuing work that began last legislative session to give higher education faculty and staff the opportunity to make a one-time move between extant benefit systems. This new benefit opportunity has been championed by administration and faculty as a recruitment and retention tool specifically for faculty. Act 88 establishes a new project delivery method for deferred maintenance projects called job order contracting. And this new mechanism, we hope, will provide streamlined and efficient time to job start, leading to faster completion of outstanding deferred maintenance projects across the state. Act 298 creates a new taxation level for online sports wagering and video poker and directs a portion of that new, of those new proceeds towards higher education athletics programs. All of our institutions will benefit equally from that new potential revenue stream. Finally, HB 77, which is currently awaiting the governor's signature, passed and seeks to revise the TOPPS program to add a new category award called the Excellence Award. And this is for students who have a score of 31 or above on the ACT or an equivalent score on the SAT or classic learning test. That new award, it provides an amount of up to $12,000 per year for any of our public institutions and $8,500 at eligible private institutions. Thank you, Supervisor Stokes, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you for the presentations. I have one question, because there was kind of one substantial bill that I noticed didn't make that listing. And that was SB, what, okay, the one that moved the University of New Orleans to the Louisiana State University system?
Yes, ma'am.
Was that in there?
It is, it was not in my, it was not in my list, but yes, ma'am, that did pass. And that, it was SB 202.
202.
Yes, by Senator Harris. And that, I believe, is still being awaiting signature from the governor, but it does transfer the UNO institution to LSU. And that began a process that will continue until the accreditation body approves it, at which time, according to the way the legislation is written, that will transfer officially management of the institution to the LSU board.
Yeah, and we receive funding to, to solve some of the debt crisis at UNO, correct?
Yes, ma'am, $25 million to additionally aid UNO. Sorry, 20 and 5 was an additional part of the appropriation.
Yeah, it was kind of confusing the way it was split out between a couple of bills and some additional deferred maintenance, I think, payments for UNO as well? In the 25, okay, that makes sense.
Yes, ma'am, that's inclusive of the 25.
That makes sense. Okay, good, I just wanted to make sure, because I was like, that seemed like a big one that might not have been there. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Is there any other business to come before the committee at this time? All right, thank you. That concludes the business of the legislative committee. The next item to be considered, I believe there was one that got called and it was out of order.
It should be personnel, yes, ma'am.
Personnel, yeah.
Thank you, Supervisor Stokes. Chair Saleem will now address items that are on the Personnel Committee agenda.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, we now have ten consent items. Number nine is no longer on the agenda. On the Personnel Committee, Ms. Neal, Business Operations Director, will provide the report for the board and the public.
Thank you, Mr. Saleem, good afternoon. Chair Romero, President Gallo, and board members. M1, Grambling State University's request for approval to appoint Mr. Marcus Kennedy as interim dean of Campus Life and Holistic Development, effective April 11th, 2025. M2, Louisiana Tech University's request for approval to appoint Ms. Lisa Bradley as senior vice president for finance and CFO, effective June 1st, 2025. M3, McNeese State University's request for approval to appoint Dr. C. Keegan-Legon as dean of the College of Liberal Arts, effective April 10th, 2025. M4, McNeese State University's request for approval to appoint Ms. April Broussard as vice president for Business Affairs, effective July 1st, 2025. M5, Nichols State University's request for approval to appoint Dr. Todd Keller as provost and vice president for Academic Affairs, effective June 2nd, 2025. M6, Northwestern State University's request for approval to appoint Dr. Mary Edith Stacy as dean of the Graduate School, effective April 14th, 2025. M7, Southeastern Louisiana University's request for approval to appoint Dr. George E. Skipper as provost and vice president for Academic Affairs, effective July 21st, 2025. M8, Southeastern Louisiana University's request for approval to continue the appointment of Dr. Daniel McCarthy as interim dean of Research and Innovation, effective June 30th, 2025, and as interim dean of Science and Technology, effective July 3rd, 2025. M10, University of Louisiana Monroe's request for approval to appoint Dr. Michelle McEgan as the interim provost and vice president for Academic Affairs, effective June 10th, 2025. M11, University of Louisiana at Monroe's request for approval to appoint Dr. Raymundo Arturo Rodriguez as dean of the College of Business and Social Sciences, effective June 11th, 2025. And, Mr. Saleem, this concludes the consent items being considered today.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. If anyone requires further clarification on the board? None, anybody in the public, any comments? Then I would recommend approval of items M1 through M10 now. Can I have a motion or a second?
Mr. Saleem, I'll second the motion that somebody down there just made, Mr. Broussard.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion is approved. Any other business to come before the committee?
Mr. Saleem, I know we have some of the people that we just voted to confirm in attendance. I'm not sure if they would like to speak.
Along with their presidents.
Thank you, Supervisor Saleem, Chair Romero, President Gallo. I'm honored to have Dr. Todd Keller with me, a Nichols alumnus, longtime faculty member. When I came, he was in the provost's office as an assistant or associate provost. He became a vice provost. He served when the provost was out on medical leave. He served when the provost retired. And now he was selected by an internal search committee, the clear winner. And he's been an absolute godsend to me. He's done everything I've asked and more, and I want to introduce you, Dr. Todd Keller.
Thank you, Dr. Klune. Chair Romero, President Gallo, supervisors, thank you very much for considering and approving these actions today. I have a 26-year history of employment with Nichols State University, and I feel very blessed and honored to have had that up to this point. My relationship with the university started long before that. In Morgan City High School, my band used to go to the Nichols campus for the District 7 marching band festivals. And to this day, when I can get away from the office, I like to still go sit in the stands and watch that occur. And as Dr. Klune said, I later attended Nichols State University and graduated in the baccalaureate nursing program, and then returned to the university to teach for 16 years in that program. But probably the best part of my story is that I did not do any of this by myself. Through four presidents, six provosts, and innumerable numbers of faculty members and staff members at Nichols State University, the one thing that I have always felt was great support at Nichols State University. And once again, I am blessed to have had that. But I've also had some pretty amazing experiences along the way. And one of those was being a member of Cohort III Management and Leadership Institute with Dr. Kapri Sayoub and Dr. Jim Henderson. And that is probably the very first time that I've ever been there. Henderson, and that is probably the very first time that I started to understand the concept of system-ness. And so, sitting through all of today's proceedings have been very interesting, particularly the current MNLI group talking about that system approach. So I am very happy to hear all of that. I would be remiss if I did not mention my person. New faculty during new faculty orientation, they'll often ask if, if I have any points or tips for them just entering higher education, and the one thing I always tell them is find your person, that person who will support you, that person who will get behind you and push you. So in 1999, a woman, Dr. Sue Westbrook, hired me to teach in the nursing program. At the time, she was department head, she went on to become dean of the College of Nursing. She later on became provost at Nichols State University, and so through all of those iterations, it seemed like her and I were always together, working together, again, most recently in academic affairs. But that is one person who I feel is ultimately responsible for me being where I am today because she was my person who supported me throughout, not only my nursing education, she taught me in that program, but she bossed me around for quite a while, too. But once again, thank you, and I am most appreciative to this, for, for this, and the last thing I will say is this. The gentleman to my right, Dr. Klune, has given me an awesome, awesome opportunity, but the responsibility is also very much recognized. It's when you're sitting in an office with someone and they look at you and they say, "I trust your judgment," that's when things become very real, because number one, that is not something that I would ever take lightly, and number two, that is something that I will work every single day to live up to, that trust of that judgment. So I thank Dr. Klune very much for that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Go ahead Northwestern next, and then McNeese.
We, we have a crypt, so please be cautious.
Shush, you're supposed to stay on the screen.
I can't read a script with Wade Bruce, do you, Will? It's impossible.
You're going right here. I'm going over there. Take it easy, we don't want any lawsuits now.
I know a lawyer or two.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman? Yes.
Make sure President Genovese doesn't speak, we don't have two more hours.
We are on schedule.
I didn't come here for abuse, I, I came here to thank you for, good afternoon, members of the Board of Supervisors of the UL system, and President Gallo, Chairman Romero, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to appear before you. This will be brief, believe it or not. I also want a note of thanks to President and Mrs. Will Wainwright for being just the hostess with the mostest and for a very wonderful day today. Thank you very much, appreciate that. Before you, we have, I'd like to introduce Dr. Mary Edith Stacy. She has been with Northwestern longer than most of the furniture that we have, and we're in a 140-year institution, so she, she has been with us for more than 30 years, and she's been a professor in the Department of Psychology, she's been a professor in, in the School of Business, she's been very, very actively involved in student affairs and served as coordinator for the scholarships, and she's also been our director of enrollment management. So she's, she's been there and done that and played the game and covered a lot, a lot of bases in that regard. Most recently, she has served as our dean of the business school and has done a remarkable job there. I might also point out that she just finished putting together a continuing legal education seminar that we had at Northwestern University, and it was a phenomenal seminar with, with at least two Supreme Court justices speaking on behalf. She did a masterful job, had great attendance, and let me tell you something, getting lawyers together like that is like herding cats, and for somebody to be able to do something like that and do it in a successful manner, that says a lot about you, Dean Stacy, and thank you for doing that. She actually grew up on Northwestern's campus. She, she started off in the Child Development Center, then went to the elementary lab school, then she went to the middle school, then she attended Northwestern where she got her degree. This young lady here brings an awful lot of essential skills in her new role as the dean of graduate school, and we look forward to having her and working with her and supporting her in, in this new role, and thanks so much for approving her. It's, it's all yours, Dean Stacy.
Thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate that. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair, supervisors, and President Gallo, it is my pleasure to be considered for this appointment as the dean of the Graduate School at Northwestern State University. I'm going to say this a little bit more eloquently than you did, Mr. President, but for a score plus 10 and some change, I have been at Northwestern. As you alluded to, in-depth experiences in student services, enrollment management, faculty teaching at the instructor level and at the assistant professor level, and hopefully y'all will, I'll get approved in September to go to the associate professor level, and also in academic administration have made this position possible for me to achieve. If, if you don't believe President Genovese's my accounts of my experiences, I have two character witnesses here today, I have Dr. Nick Bruno and I have Dr. Dicky Crawford, and if you can successfully manage a WPA-era, double-loaded corridor communal bath dormitory, you can do anything on a college campus. So I would like to thank President Genovese and Dr. Greg Handel, our provost, for selecting me to serve in this role. Also, I am a lifelong resident of Nakadish, along with my husband Russell, who is also an A, alumni of Northwestern State University, but my pride and joy is right here, Ms. Kaylee and Stacy, who actually did go to the Child Development Center and through eighth grade at the middle lab school, I went to the Child Development Center. Somebody put me enrolled in the lab school, but I'll take it, it's good, we'll go with it. She is currently enrolled at Northwestern State, she's a business administration major, she's active in her sorority, BCM, and currently an SGA senator, so we have done something right in the legacy in our household. So being that SGA senator is probably one of our proudest achievements besides being on the president's list this past spring, so we're looking forward to her continuing her career at Northwestern State University. I do look forward to serving in this role to strengthen our graduate school in our region. Our region is very important to me. Not only have I been a administrator and a employee at Northwestern State University, my husband and I are also farmers, and if you understand farming, you understand what your community needs, and we need a strong graduate program. Again, thank you for giving me this opportunity, I will do what is needed, and I am here to ask, answer any questions if anybody has any.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I would like to further commend President Genovese on his personal growth in accepting the term "brief" in the world we live in, although his growth has been brief.
Miracles never cease. I want to know from Dr. Wainwright if I can have this Southeastern.
We work, Mr. Chairman, we work on that every day.
It's a labor of love, right?
Thank you for giving us a chance. Can you give us?
Mr. Chairman, President Gallo, members of the board, thank you again, and I say again because over a year ago, we, we announced an entire change in leadership at McNeese State University as we stressed financial sustainability, and if you remember, y'all looked at me like I was a little bit crazy, which I am, and we changed the entire executive leadership team, we changed 5016 deans, and we continue to work towards developing a financial sustainable model. During that year, which is already 14 months, we have been able to work each one through a national service to make sure that our initial thought was correct, and today I get the opportunity, and I got everybody up here for a reason, I'll tell you at the end, but today I get the opportunity to first introduce our dean, Dr. Lejeune, who, by the way, we had to twist his arm because had a very, had a very significant publication and research record, and we all know once you get into administration, that side of the, of your CV, if you will, sort of disappears as you're spending more and more time in administration and less time in research and publications. So able to give that up and then take the administrative role, served for a year in the interim role, and I am very honored to introduce to you him as our dean. Dean Lejeune.
Thank you very much, Dr. Roos. I want to, Chair Romero, President Gallo, members of the board, I want to say that I will be very brief, I know it's been a robust agenda, I want to say thank you for this opportunity, honored and humbled. As an undergraduate of McNeese and as a person who graduated with three degrees from the school, it means a great deal to me. I've been thrilled to see students have the same experience that I've had, one that's life-changing, one that involves excellence. I am honored to work with Dr. Roos, Senior Vice President, Dr. Nicholas, Dr. Buckles, Vice President of Academic Affairs, and the, the rest of the executive leadership team to make McNeese what it is and what it meant to me.
I will say, he wasn't supposed to be here, he was supposed to be in jury duty, so I didn't have remarks prepared for him, so I just, I just kind of winged that a little bit. The next one I had remarks prepared for. She has been the balance in the room, she is the one that tries to keep several alpha males on a leash, if you will, she, she makes us slow down and be more thoughtful about who we are and what we do. She, as you all know, you've heard me talk, and as we fight about financial sustainability, she makes sure that we focus on data and that we continue to make data-driven decisions that are best for this institution. She is our financial whiz behind it all and really, are really excited to introduce to her today, and I will tell you how excited we are, we had a parent orientation last night for our orientation, and the one thing we started doing is that we, we get everybody on the executive leadership team there just for our parents, so we would have time to, they can ask any question they want. Every member of the executive leadership team is with the parents. We didn't get out of there until about 8:00 at night, and I said, "Okay, I got to go to Hammond because we're going to introduce, we're going to introduce our vice president tomorrow," and every one of this executive leadership team said, "We're going to drive across the state with you tonight because we want to be there to support as one executive leadership team." So it is my honor and privilege to introduce our permanent Vice President of Business Affairs, Ms. Broussard.
Thank you, Dr. Roos, and thank you, board. I'm thrilled to be here, it's been quite a year, we've been through a lot of challenges in the last year. Our leadership team meets every Monday, and we don't always see eye to eye, but we push each other and we come out of the room stronger for the struggles that we go through, so I'm very appreciative of all four of my guys, and I also actually have my other guy here. My husband, Dan, joined us, he also works for McNeese, so our family is fully committed in making sure that McNeese is a very stable presence in, in our area. The other group that I really want to thank is the Business Affairs Division at McNeese, they are a group, they are phenomenal, and it is all women, so the whole Business Affairs team, I could not do this job without them, they have a wealth of knowledge, they have a commitment and a dedication to the university that is just unparalleled. Something else that I wanted to mention is my connections with some of the UL system members, Eddie and Ashley and Bruce, the connections that we have, as well as some of the connections that I've made with other CFOs in the system over the past year, has really been helpful, it's beneficial to all of us whenever we can collaborate and really focus on how to drive our universities forward, so I'm very appreciative of that, and I'm happy to be here serving. That's, I also have three degrees from McNeese, so the university means a lot to me, the state means a lot to me, and I take this position very seriously, so thank you.
Say one more, one more thing, I, Mr. Chairman and President Gallo, thank you for the way you started this meeting, and please keep our board member in your thoughts and prayers.
Mr. President, Mr. President, could you affirm for us whether Drew Brown actually got a degree this time?
We, I will say, I'll say that I was lucky enough to be the dean of Drew, he's a graduate of one of our programs, and so I can confirm he was, not only did he graduate, but he was the outstanding graduate of McNeese this year, not only of the College of Liberal Arts, but the entire university, so.
He did, yes, he did win our most outstanding graduate. I will tell you, if you ever wonder what, why we do what we do, hang around Drew Brown. It'll motivate you to do that.
Welcoming our newest president.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the opportunity, President Gallo, Chairman Romero, members of the board. It's my honor to introduce Dr. Michelle McCann as our interim Vice President of Academic Affairs and provost at ULM. So she's a dedicated scholar, a leader, and a champion for academic excellence. She brings over 35 years of invaluable experience to this role. As the Susan and William Bonalsky-endowed Chair and Professor of Accounting, she has left an indelible mark on ULM, serving as the dean of the College of Business and Social Sciences since 2021. Her tenure has been marked by innovation, by leadership, and by unwavering commitment to student success. She has progressed through the academic ranks from a non-tenured track instructor to tenured full professor, holding various administrative roles, including department head, school director, associate dean, and dean. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. First, thank you to all of you for, excuse me, I'll get over here, I'm about to scoot, I'm getting closer to you. Thank you very much for having me here and for the vote earlier today. I have to 100% thank our wonderful new president, President Castile, who's putting this confidence and faith in me, and she approached me and actually really gave me that sales pitch, if you haven't met her, you need to, real quick, because she can sell you on anything, and she sold me real quick on the direction of ULM and where we're going to go in the future, so I could not be more excited. A little bit more about the background that I bring to this role is that not only have I've been around ULM for quite a while, both of my, my undergraduate and MBA are from ULM, and my doctorate is from Louisiana Tech. I was born and raised in Monroe, Louisiana, got married, moved all the way across the river to West Monroe, Louisiana, so definitely Northeast Louisiana is very important to me and my entire family. I've played a lot of roles in the university administratively, but as well, I've chaired SAC COC committees, chaired calendar committee, commencement committee, and name them, I probably have been on them or chaired them at some point in time. I've served on various boards across the region, which includes the Northeast Chapter of CPAs, Louisiana Society of CPAs, let's see, Strauss Theater, Louisiana Cancer Foundation, various other things like that. So I like to be involved in the community, I like to make sure that we're growing and doing the things that we need to do. Throughout this meeting today, I've heard a lot about the non-traditional student, those students who are over 25 years old, the retention rates for those students, things like that. I want to tell you that I'm a first-generation student myself, very first one in my family and my husband's family. I did not start school until I was almost 30 years old and went through the programs that I've just mentioned to you since then. So that non-traditional student role has a very important place in my heart because I did that, and I understand how important they are to not only us as enrollment numbers, for instance, but also in terms of improving what we have here in the state of Louisiana. It's so important that in 2022, I established an endowed scholarship that is intended for students who are non-traditional. You must be at least 28 years or older in order to qualify for the, for the, for the scholarship. So you can tell from that, I am very invested in that. So thank you, thank you, Dr. Castile, thank you for your confidence in me. As a result of this role, I did give up the dean position, the dean for the College of Business and Social Sciences. Business and Social Sciences at ULM, and as a result, after a search that happened throughout this past year, I am proud to present to you Dr. Arturo Rodriguez, Ramondo Arturo. We know you. Yeah, that's your stage name. I've been associated with this guy for a long time, actually was involved in the hiring originally many years ago. He has just been a shining star within the college and within the university. He's been involved with athletics to some degree, played tennis all of his life, but he's also been a go-getter in the community. He's got practical background with corporate finance experience. He takes care of business, he's well-loved by the students, been a great teacher, good researcher, very involved in the community. So I'd like to introduce Dr. Arturo Rodriguez.
Thank you. When I thank the board for the vote, for your confidence in me to be able to carry out this role. I got to explain the accent. I'm from Mexico originally, the deep south, and I came to this country on a tennis scholarship, as Dr. McCann mentioned. Out of that came about an undergraduate degree in marketing, an international business, and a master's degree in business with a concentration in leadership. I went into the financial industry through banking. I was a commercial lender for several community banks in Colorado and New Mexico, and at the same time, I was working on my doctorate, was a doctorate of management. I wrote a paper that my mentor in the doctoral program asked me to send to a conference, and turns out that Dr. McCann put together that conference, so I met her there, and she encouraged me to apply for a position that was open at ULM. That's how I got there back in 2007. I started as an instructor, climbed through the ranks, I'm currently an Associate Professor of Finance at ULM, was a Director of the Hoover School of Accounting and Financial Information Services prior to this role, and Dr. McCann appointed me to the Management and Leadership Institute, which was of invaluable worth to me because it allowed me to see myself as other people see me, as opposed to how I used to see myself. I was able to develop the confidence to believe in the skills that I have and the abilities that I have obtained through my years of experience. So I'm looking forward to the opportunity to work with my new Provost and our new President, Dr. Castillo, and to be able to implement the vision that she has for us. Thank you.
Mr. Saleem, our new Provost at Southeastern has not yet moved here, but if it's okay with you all, he can come to the next board meeting and be introduced. Dr. Skipper, I'm terrible with names, but I will remember that one. Dr. Skipper, that's a memorable name. He'll make an impression.
Thank you Supervisor Saleem. Before we proceed to Dr. Gallo's report, I did want to take a moment to express the deepest sympathy to the Northwestern community for the recent loss of legendary coach Leon Johnson. He's contributed to this system and to Northwestern State, and he will be a tremendous loss to the Northwestern community and family. And I know Dr. Saleem would like to take a moment of privilege to express his sympathies.
Thank you so much. Leon Johnson was not only an unbelievable coach in Louisiana for 50 years, he was an incredible man. He led the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, Special Olympics, you name it, he did it. Was on all our search committees for coaches, just a wonderful, wonderful man. The track's named after him there, and every year, there's a big track meet, cross-country meet, that he formed and started it. Children from all, kids from all over the state of Louisiana come in, and I've never heard one person say a bad thing about Leon Johnson, and just a tremendous individual that we'll miss. Thank you.
Thank you. President Gallo, if you'd please present your report at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Campus personnel actions were made available for your review. Staff has reviewed all the requests and recommends approval. Mr. Chairman, we need a motion and a second to approve those personnel matters.
I'll make that motion.
Move by Supervisor Stevens?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Davison. Any discussion of questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's approved.
Thank you, members of the board. In June of 2018, the Board of Supervisors of the University of Louisiana System approved a new bylaw regarding the board's self-evaluation of its effectiveness in order to comply with SAC COC accreditation standards. In current, in its current form, the bylaws call for a self-evaluation at least every two years. It is proposed that this be changed to every year so that we can establish a better cadence of self-review in order to improve our processes and functionality based on input received from you, our board members. No vote is needed at this time since a change in bylaw requires a 30-day consideration period. Feedback to this proposed change is requested between now and when the board will vote on this matter in August. On the same subject of self-evaluation, in early July, a survey will be disseminated to the board members via the onboard platform. The survey will take less than 10 minutes to complete and will ask for your feedback on topics such as board organization, orientation, and ongoing education, fiduciary oversight, and effectiveness. Our goal is 100% participation, 100% participation by July 15th. It's important that we receive input from all of our board members so that staff learns where improvement is needed. Please reach out if you have any questions or need any assistance once the survey is made available to you. Earlier this morning, we were privileged to hear a presentation by the Management and Leadership Institute from our eighth M&amp;LI cohort. We appreciate Dr. Kapriis Ayub's leadership of this group since its inception. The training and work have produced some great results. Over the past eight classes, 11 vice presidents have been alums of our institute, with four of those also serving as provosts, and we have 17 serving as deans. There have been 72 promotions among the past participants in positions representing every sector of our universities, and it is apparent that these members will only continue to grow over the years to come. The members of this year's upcoming class are shown on the slide above. We want to congratulate all of them and certainly want to commend Dr. Ayub for all of her amazing work, and I think we should give her a round of applause. As you've heard, our new strategic plan outlines a bold, forward-thinking vision for the future, and I certainly want to thank the board for approving the strategic plan. To support this direction, we partnered with Emergent Method also to help align our organizational structure with the plans for strategic priorities. As part of this effort, we reimagined several key job descriptions. These changes are more than administrative, they are strategic. They reflect our commitment to designing an organization that actively supports our evolving goals and initiatives. As you can see when comparing the previous organizational structure with the new chart, this structure introduces varying levels to support future growth for both existing employees and additional FTEs. We anticipate that this growth will be rolled out in phases with new positions added as necessary to meet our operational needs. As Jim Collins in the book Good to Great said, "If we get the right people on the bus, in the right seats on the bus, then we can go someplace great." That's exactly what we're aiming to do. The proposed organizational changes are now being presented for your consideration. Mr. Chairman, I would request a motion and vote to approve those.
Move by Supervisor Pierre?
Second Stevens.
Second by Stevens. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, President Gallo. Again, we want to thank President Wainwright, his wonderful bride, and campus folks for supporting our visit to this campus and hosting us this month for our board meeting. We certainly look forward to seeing the final outcome of this building, significant renovation, and its contribution to student experiences going forward. I know you see some great things come from this investment. Today, we'll conduct the evaluation with Assistant President Rick Gallo. The evaluation will be conducted in an executive session, and after the evaluation, we will reconvene in open session to cover the final agenda items. The Board of Supervisors for the University of Louisiana System may meet in an executive session to discuss personnel matters under the provisions of Louisiana Revised Statute 4217. While in executive session, the board may not make any motions or take any votes. May have a motion and a second to go in executive session.
So move Stevens.
Move by Stevens. Second by Busada. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Carol, if you would, please call the roll.
Mr. Busada?
Yes.
Mr. Davison?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Nish Chaiwa?
Yes.
Ms. Pierre?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Saleem?
No. I mean, yeah.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Stokes?
Y'all see a common thread from Natchitoches? So we will now adjourn to executive session.
And if members would take your iPads, please, with you.